The address. But EPA last week came through, I don't know if y'all saw, that they came through and they took down six of the bad houses around La Jolla and stuff. So, you know, you could just take these and pass them around and stuff. But just to show you how we're cleaning the community up. And we couldn't do it without Mr. Mallon.
I made the best of the good one, right? No, you helped clean it up.
All right, good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming out. I'd like to call this meeting of the regular, on a city council meeting to order. This is November 20th, 2023. The time is now 6:01 PM. If you'd all rise for the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you. Those two words will be very big this week as we come together with relatives and friends and give you thanks and praise for so many different things, especially the gift of life and health. Be with those who may be without a loved one this Thanksgiving and be with those who are working through the holiday. Thank you for those who volunteered to run for the open seats in our city this year, and thank you to the citizens who let their voices be heard. Let us do best to continue working together, making La Jolla the best that it can be, and remember that all our wisdom, strength, and guidance comes from you, Lord. Thank you. Give thanks in all circumstances, for this is God's will for you in Christ Jesus. 1 Thessalonians 5:18. Amen. If you'll stay standing for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Vila.
Our pledge of allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is going to be a little bit different from our normal council meeting, but we're going to still go with the roll call. Mrs. Schofield.
Ramirez.
Present.
Velasquez.
Present.
Ayala.
Here.
Ochoa.
Here.
Vila.
Here.
Antoya.
Here.
All right, minutes of the previous meeting. Have a motion?
A motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. All right, unfinished business, Mr. Mallon.
Mr. Mayor, if I could address the three things that are on unfinished business. The resolution is amending a prior resolution, which you folks passed at the last meeting, updating some numbers. The second and third items are these ordinances on second reading. The whole purpose in having two readings is to allow for adjustments to be made. In item number B, there are no adjustments. That mill levy continues to be a static constant. Item C does reflect some adjustments. So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, a motion to approve the resolution, approve the 2024 minute budget.
All right, do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a loss for your vote. Mr. Vila, are you voting? Do you vote? You abstain?
I just got it today, so I didn't have a chance to read it.
Okay, so that is five yeses and one abstention.
Then, Mr. Mayor, on the second and third items, there'd be second reading, so by motions and second. Second reading of an ordinance fixing the mill levy for assessment evaluations for the year ending on December 31st, 2023, fiscal year 2024.
All right, do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not a loss for your vote. Abstain. And that passes unanimously.
And, Mr. Mayor, on second reading, the annual appropriation ordinance appropriating sums of money to defray expenses and land buildings in the city of Lahana for the city's fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024 and ending December 31st, 2024.
Do you have a motion?
A motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Is that for the adding the four different activities that were going to be, previously were canceled, Dean? Would you say, Dean?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Not a loss for your vote. That passes unanimously.
So when they were talking about the numbers changing or anything, you know, last council meeting, when they passed that resolution or the third one for the general fund, it had $8,514,100. With the ones tonight, they reflect the 1% being added back in, and it's $10,208,700. Those were the only changes on those two. Just for clarification to everybody.
Right. Presentation for years of service to outgoing council member Edward Vila. Mr. Vila.
Just pass it down to her, no speech.
Well, I have to, I have to. This comes not just from me, but from your family. So, you know, different generations have different views, and that's okay. Older generations didn't grow up with all the technology that the younger generations have, but the younger generations don't have all the experiences that the older generations have. There needs to be room for understanding when these two groups plan for the future. Councilman Vila and myself do not see things the same way. That's okay. He is not my enemy. He's just a fellow citizen with whom we disagree with on certain things. That doesn't change the fact that Councilman Vila volunteered to serve this city for eight years as the Ward III representative. Anytime someone volunteers one year, that's a big help to our community. That is something that we have in common. We both love this community very much. Now, like myself, Councilman Vila is a family man, and his son Max had some words to say about his father. Edward Ed Vila has a deep love for the city of La Jolla, whether it be an athletic event, community event, or a church event, or his work with the Knights of Columbus or American Legion. You can count on seeing Ed there or volunteering in some way and just enjoying the festivities. Many of us know about Ed's military service and work history. However, it should also be noted that he and his wife, Alvinor, have four children with college degrees, ten grandkids from Florida to Colorado, and they had many opportunities to move, but they love this community, and his children are proud of him and are ready for more family time. Thank you, Councilman Vila.
Yeah, I just wanted to say. Today reminds me of the day I come back from Vietnam when we landed at Sea-Tac International Airport, spit on, bumped into, called all kinds of names. And here, after eight years, I am wrongly persecuted for something that is totally wrong. I am not that kind of person. So, believe me, Joe and, what's his name down there, Paul, the principals in that, and then the rest of this council sitting up here, assisted by the city attorney and the city manager, just pouring it on. By the time it was happening, I was overwhelmed, and it's just impossible kind of crap sitting on you. So, I'm going away with my head held high, because I'm not, I'm not that kind of person that the public, some of the public perceives that I am. So, and I know I am not that kind of person. That's just something that was trumped up, put in a nasty letter written by the city attorney, signed by every council person up here. So, with that, I say good luck to everybody.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We can have Mr. Velasquez, Ms. Ochoa, Mr. Stoker, and Ms. Rikoff please come to the front. Y'all raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeremiah Stoker.
You solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend.
You solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the codes and ordinances of the city of La Jolla.
And the codes and ordinances of the city of La Jolla.
And faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member.
And faithfully perform the duties of the office of council member.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Anne Marie and Jeremiah, please take your seats. And Mr. Ayala, if you would come down. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Joseph Ayala.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the codes and ordinances of the city of La Jolla.
And the codes and ordinances of the city of La Jolla.
And faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor.
And faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor.
Upon which I am about to enter.
About, which I am about to enter.
All right. Congratulations, everyone, on being up here. Moving forward, electorate of mayor pro temp.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's been an honor to serve as a mayor pro temp for the past two years. It's afforded me the opportunity to grow, to facilitate meetings. Councilwoman Antoya has expressed an interest, and I enthusiastically nominate her for the next mayor pro temp of the city.
Are there any other nominations? Do we need a motion on that, Dean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. Yes, you can vote for yourself. Can have passage unanimously.
Does she realize she gets double the pay?
Hey, don't start that. All right, we get citizen participation tonight, so if any citizen wants to come up, five-minute time limit per person. Mel will start the clock for you. State your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. I know your name, but we got to have it on the record, too.
I understand.
Hit the, hit the light. There you go, you're on.
Douglas Golding, 1316 Lincoln Avenue. First of all, congratulations to the newly elected and reelected members of council.
Thank you, sir.
I'll clear it up for those that don't know. I wasn't in favor of 2A. I see the necessity for it passing, and I'm not totally upset with the passage, but I don't think I'm alone. I don't think a lot of people voted for a tax increase. They voted to avert having things closed. I hope with the passage of 2A, they don't, our city leaders don't see this as a mandate for business as usual. Many citizens who vote for it, I said, didn't vote for a tax increase, rather to keep the library, the swimming pool, the golf course, et cetera, from closing. In the last two years, under current leadership, the city's financials, you know, face have become worse, which necessitated the passage of the tax increase. So if our leaders continue as in the past, we will again face the same problem in the future. I hope our leaders understand this and are more financially prudent in their spending in the future. I also hope our leaders refrain from using what I'll call falsehoods in justifying their actions. An example, Brick and Tile Park, which I don't feel we needed, telling people it was built with grant money and therefore didn't cost the citizens. Whether money came from the city taxes, state taxes, or grants funded by federal taxes, we, the taxpayers, paid for it. There is no pot of gold at the end of the rainbow that this money comes out of for these projects. And whether I pay city tax, federal tax, state tax, it's a tax burden at the end of the year. It doesn't really matter where it came from, the total is what I'm looking at. In any case, the park has added future maintenance costs, which we're going to pay for. The city also paid the salary and benefits to the employee for writing and obtaining the grant. So it did cost the city and will cost the city in the future. Claim, I had another, something about 2A, but I will move past that since we are historically past that. I ask the reelected mayor and this council to do the job they are elected to do and hold the line on frivolous spending and say no to push personal pet projects like moving train engines, building new unnecessary parks, parking lots, et cetera. We need to call on our citizens as well to take responsibility for their property. Just the other day, blowing leaves into the streets, letting weeds overgrow, trash not disposed of properly, and other actions which put a burden on the city needs to be addressed. We can't just say, well, there's people that can't afford to do that. I keep my property tidy using the once-weekly trash pickup that I pay for. And as bad as irresponsible citizens are, it's worse when government enables this behavior by providing month-long refuge station availability, citywide and alley cleanups, and refusing to take a hard stand on ordinance abuses. If you can bring to me someone who used it at the city cost, that refuge station being open for an entire month, that could not have done it with regular trash pickup, the regular hours that it's open, or the tree dump.
That's your time, though.
I'm just about, give me just a second, I got to close it. We can and need to do better, and we will become, or we're going to become a socialist society with the government doing everything at our expense.
Thank you, Doug.
The citizens too lazy to appreciate what they have and take responsibility for taking care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for citizens' participation? Here comes two businessmen that I see around town.
So proud of you boys coming up here with your mom. So proud of you, man. Way to go.
This is Daxton and Drew Stokes. Address is 16 East 22nd Street. And we are here requesting a street closure on Saturday, December 2nd in conjunction with the Parade of Lights for a small holiday thing.
Closure now, which?
Sorry, Santa Fe between 2nd and, just the alley would really be adequate. Santa Fe, 2nd and, 2nd and 1st to the alley.
Oh, okay, down the daylight lonnet?
Yeah.
And that, okay. Okay, north to the alley.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, that now, that's out of the parade route.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why we're.
During the parade, just during the parade?
A little before and a little after. They're going to open the hot dog stand and then do campfires. We're doing smores as a fundraiser for the CSP toy drive. So, we're going to have campfires set up, and I just don't want kids to be roasting marshmallows and vehicles driving down the street.
Yeah, hey, if you talk to Todd, my chance.
Uh, no.
Okay, yeah. And if you guys don't have a problem with it, you know, long as he's in.
That's your guys' discretion.
Yeah, we'll give the discretion, yeah. Okay, but before, before I say, before they say, okay, somebody talk. Come on, boys, come on, one of you guys can do it.
I'll save them, that's your time.
Yeah, all right.
Thanks, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Want to first congratulate all of you that are sitting in front of me. Lot of hard work, and I'd have to say that we are probably all, myself and everyone behind me, we don't think that 2A only passed because people wanted to save places. It was about the future. So, I just have a letter that I'd like to read. To all the supporters, on behalf of Woodruff Memorial Library, we extend our sincere gratitude to every person who showed their support during the election. The goal for us was to educate the community about how your local sales tax dollars go to the general fund and make it possible for 22 City of La Jolla departments to serve our community. It took a village, and altogether we did it, and it's huge. Our efforts were always about the future of La Jolla. I want to make that clear. The future of La Jolla, not just saving some of these jobs that you see up here. The opportunity to see an ocean of people come together with a common goal to explain to people the importance of their investment was actually incredible. A huge shout out to the 2A for LJ committee, who were a group of people from all walks of life, some who could vote on 2A and some who could not, who made a decision at some point to spend time, energy, and money on fighting for what is best for our city. Even if you were not a part of this committee, the time you spent keeping the discussion going on the importance of sales tax made a world of difference. How amazing it feels to be a part of a community that cares. We desire to serve our community to the best of our ability, providing a plethora of resources, some that can only be found at Woodruff Memorial Library, in case some of you didn't know that. We look forward to the road ahead and where we will be able to continue our service to the Arkansas Valley and beyond. We are grateful for your continued support of Woodruff Memorial Library and the city of La Jolla, and we are so hopeful that all of you will lead us into that future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Liz Roberts, course on libraries. My thing's a little bit different tonight. Connie Elder passed away on November 11th. And it's kind of ironic and stuff, they were founders of the Woodruff Memorial Library Friends. They were an important, important part. So, there was an article that came across, I wanted to do something in memory of them, and so I did post on Facebook, some of you probably read that, but I'd like to share that with council participants here. And it was dated back, this is an article from October 27th, 2008, from the Lahana Tribune Democrat, and it was, "Woodruff Library Friends George and Connie Elder Were Honored Friday as a conclusion to the Library Week as part of the 120th Celebration." So Connie moved to Lahana in 1963. George was born here in the early 1900s. Sandra Hockemeyer was the librarian, and she, with several others, approached the elders with a great vision of having a group of people, aside from the city, at Lahana, who would be known as Friends of the Library and would help in the interest of the library. By May of 1995, the Friends of the Library were incorporated, and the first book sale was held in 1996. So that's when the book sale started for us, where they've helped support us and so forth. George and Connie Elder had been dedicated to the library without fail from the beginning of the Friends. When asked why they had been so dedicated to the library, the answer came easily. Because we believe in it. They also believed in it, just like Mr. Woodruff, our founder of Woodruff, the Friends, well, it was the influence collection. They both also added that it is a way to give back to the community. They plan to stay active with the library until we can move. In the 14 years that the elders had been highly involved with the Friends of the Library, they've seen great technological progression. They were there when everything was done by hand, have seen computers come in, and they use the databases, just to name a few. When asked what their favorite part of the library is, they struggled to narrow their answer down to just a couple. Both elders decided that for fun reading, they like mysteries. Both agreed that they liked to read just about anything. So here's a comment Connie made. Connie feels that getting the new library was their biggest accomplishment, while George thinks getting book sales done was his biggest accomplishment during their time at the library. But when asked if there's anything that they had not been able to accomplish as a Friends of the Library, George stated that the new needs are discovered continually. of the Library, George stated that the new needs are discovered continually. It is impossible to say one specific thing. They feel that as technology grows and needs change, there will be charges in the, changes in the Friends and library's futures. Current Woodruff Memorial Library and Sandy Messick reported meeting George and Connie in the summer of 1979. And has shared many personal experiences over the years, Messick reports that they have provided much support for her as well as others, and have worked very hard fundraising. They've only been a call away. Lahana City Manager Rick Klein said that the communities are made up of individuals. Some of those individuals stepped up, he said. "They, the elders, give me courage to do my job," Klein also feels that a plaque does not do justice for the work they've done. In receiving the award, Connie said, "It's been a pleasure serving the community. We appreciate the plaque, but couldn't have done it alone. We appreciate the help over the years." And George sums up with, "It's been fun." Library Advisory Board Chairman Matt Burris reported that the Friends of the Library was officially started in May 1995. At last count, there were about 80 friends, and the strategic planning modernization was a goal. By November 1995, the Friends of the Library formed a committee, "Yes on 2A." Their first fundraising was 1.5 million bond issued to build the new library. It passed with the vote count of 1,008 to 998. And this was written by Jennifer Justice at the time, where, "So, that's kind of part of the thing, too, we just got 2A passed, which we're so thankful for everybody's support." I know I am, because I want to see our community continue growing and not go back. I've seen things that have happened in the back, and want us to continue. You know, this is my home, I love it. I've been there 34 years as a librarian, and it doesn't get any better than that. I mean, learning all the time, and our community showing such support to us this time. But the 2A, back then, for getting, the vision of getting a new library, and now the 2A passing, it's just incredible. It was meant to be.
And that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizen participation? All right, moving forward, Mr. Maloff. Oh, that's me. Hold on. Reappoint Lauren Sullivan to the ARPA Board, term to expire 12/31/27. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to reappoint Mr. Lauren Sullivan to the ARPA Board, term to expire 12/31/2027. A second?
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously. I think I saw Ron Hall out there. You'll have to let him know at the barista tomorrow that he got reappointed to the ARPA Board. All right, now, Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, Safeway Stores 46, Inc., doing business at Safeway Store number 3723, has requested a renewal of their beer and wine off-premises license. The renewal application is in order, fees have been paid, postings have been accomplished. Management recommends favorable consideration of this request.
Do I have a motion?
I motion for the renewal of the beer and wine liquor license by Safeway Stores 46.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Now I'll ask for your vote. That passes unanimously. Mr. Maloff.
Mr. Mayor, on an annual basis, at the end of the year, we have to balance our books. This is something that we do every year, and that is to make adjustments to the existing budget that was passed a year ago but is now coming to a close. So this ordinance is a, sort of a cleanup ordinance to be considered on first reading. So for us, new members, someone should suggest a introduction by title only. I would read the title, and then a motion and a second.
All right, anyone want to introduce it by title only?
Great way to get your name in the minute.
I motion for the ordinance to be read by title only.
Mr. Mayor, for the council's consideration on first reading and ordinance-making supplement appropriations to the General Fund, Property Management Fund, Electric Fund, and Wastewater Fund for the calendar year 2023.
All right, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I have something.
Go ahead.
So on Section 2, Item A1, I think it needs to be clarified that it is actually improvements to the building at 27786 Railroad Avenue, Building 82. And it's improvements, it's more than just a roof, and it is not to the business, Ark Valley Pellet Company. Ark Valley Pellet Company is the less-see of the space, but it is not an improvement to the business. And because that is my business, I will also be abstaining from voting on this.
And we've talked about the word, we're improving as far as on those, that.
You've got a chance to see us again on second reading at the next meeting, so we'll get a fix.
All right.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes 6-0 with one obstruction. All right, moving on, committee and board reports. I don't think anyone's met yet, some committee and board reports. City manager comments, I didn't see any city manager comments.
No, I ended up taking Thursday afternoon off after a death, and so I didn't get it out. But it was a good week last week, you know, as far as on the city side. You know, we saw the EPA come in and tear out six of the houses. And, you know, five of them were on the east side. I do got pictures that I traveled around. And, you know, and I know that a lot of, like this one lady, we took out a house on each side of her house, and she, like she told me, she goes, "You know, Mr. Klein," she goes, "You've been telling me for two years you don't get this." I did ask you, and didn't think you could get it done. And when we started this program, I'll never forget Dean saying, "It's gonna be two years before we get the first one down." And it takes about one and a half to two years for each house. One of the houses we took out was 1010 Rantone. And we do have the right to tear down the two houses north of there, but we hadn't been through the process to where we could get it into the EPA so they could budget it, so they could tear it down. We were hoping to get all three of them at once, but you'll see that one lot stayed vacant, and then they'll be back this next year. We already have five more for our next year's program. You know, city council and the community keep saying, "Clean up this community," and we're trying our hardest. You know, we took out some real white elephants when we first started the program. Second, Carson always comes to my mind, because, you know, I haven't seen that since I was a youth myself. But my hat's off to the fortitude of city council and Mr. Maloff for sticking in a program where you see little activity, and then all of a sudden, bam, you'll just, they'll come in and they got their own contractors and they get it done and stuff. And, you know, when, you know, and you're right, it's all taxpayer dollars, whether it's the EPA program, or whether it's grants, or something like that. But, you know, if we don't take advantage of them, somebody would. So, you know, we're trying, you know, we try to get as much of that federal dollars and our taxpayer dollars back into our community to make our community better. And hopefully you see that. The trail itself, man, TLM is just going full guns on it. They poured on the north side where they tied it to the playground, and the bridges are being built. They should land in Lahana right about January 1st. TLM plans on having their abutments ready and everything, just to place those, and that project should be done by February 1st done. So really looking forward to that, because those were really long-term projects, as long as when I was hearing about Liz saying about 1995, you know, because I was there at those. Of, you know, that's when we started on the trail, was 1997. So, you know, good things take a long time. But if you keep on trying, you can make a difference. You know, get you a group of champions. We've got a group of champions up here. Now we'll move this town forward, and there's not a doubt in my mind that all of us together won't get that done. So we patched up right at 4th and Carson, we're done with it, except for down around 2nd and Carson. We got to put in the pans, and then we'll pave back. We're still playing, because they're making asphalt still, for good weather. Have a lot of good things that have happened in the community, you know, you saw that HSD has taken in their first residences. That's huge. You know, there's another thing that this community stepped up for, a portion of their community, the elderly, to get that done, and they did, we got it all done. And it was all by a lot of volunteers and stuff. So when you hear that does take a village, yes, stay involved. You know, that's the only way change comes, is getting involved and doing the hard work and the good work. And that's what I see out of this group here. You know, now, the through train car, you know, that study has been put on hold until they get done with the Front Range Rail Study from Colorado Springs down to Seattle. And that's just, you know, how do we make the train work along with the freight trains? And, but BNSF is definitely on board with trying to make that work. So we've got some good things coming up, folks, so just stay tuned. Got Thanksgiving Thursday, have Thanksgiving to everybody, and got Christmas coming up. Parade Lights is December 2nd. And I know that out at Ben's Fort on December 4th, I think they have like a candlelight, or no, they got some activities for the kids and stuff like that, they kind of changed it up. So, and as far as the alley cleanup, the citywide cleanup, the grant that Martin did pick up for the tires, that was successful, you know, we almost had a thousand tires, and we didn't have to pay the landfill to haul them off or anything, they came and picked them up. So, and we're working on, by the end of the year, the hardware for the RO plant to reverse osmosis for the SCADA system. And the SCADA system, when I say that, that's your brains of that outfit. It's over 20 years old, and you know, just like you having a computer at home, you got one that's 20 years old, well, it's probably pretty slow. Well, now they don't make the parts for the one that was in reverse osmosis when we built it 22 years ago. So we're getting it replaced right now. So we're, hopefully, we got people coming in to keep checking that plant, you know, because we're not certain what the SCADA system's gonna work or not. So, you know, you got to make sure, because you can't let that plant move down.
Do we have something planned for backup for that?
Yes, we can run it by man, manually and stuff, until we get that in. So, you know, everything's kind of a process. Yeah, I saw this over at North Lahana, at north end of the 109 Bridge. Now, that pipe that comes over, that feeds North Lahana, and that also feeds our industrial park. And that was put in in 1951. This is cast iron line. It could have been worse, where we couldn't have tapped that off. North Lahana and our industrial park would have been without water. That's not acceptable. So, you know, you don't start seeing me study that Ark Valley Condo a lot more, because we need that line to come down through for redundancy, and to make sure that we have reliable water for our industries and for our customers in North Lahana. And we still have entities coming in and trying to pick off our employees. It just blows my mind. Wish they'd quit. So, but we got a lot of dedicated employees. They'd rather live here than live out in those cities. So, and I appreciate that to everyone of my employees, and I really appreciate seeing all you library ladies here.
Any other questions for Rick?
Did they ever find out what that loud boom was?
They are investigating it, they got some, it was out in the county, but the county is, you know, they got some ideas and stuff. And, oh, by the way, we did patch up off of 10th and Colorado when that general one came in, we got that done. So that's Ward 2.
And that went all the way up to 14th?
14th, 14th.
Yeah.
All right, governing body.
What about Gibson's, have you got anything on that? It's one of my ones for next year. And, you know, the owner is actually, he's been trying to sell it, and he's had a couple of interested people, but once they go through it and then they see what needs to be done, I haven't seen the sale come through. So if it's there next year, it's on the list.
All right, governing body comments.
I have a few.
Okay.
First of all, thank you to the residents and constituents of Ward 1. I know it was a tough choice, and I still appreciate your confidence, and don't take that for granted. Congratulations on 2A. That's a win for Lahana, and it's not for anything new, it's just keeping what we have. The Senior Center hosted a fantastic Thanksgiving lunch, 173 meals. Again, the outstanding work of the Advisory Board, Dorothy McClain and Karen Prager were at the door, taking money and making sure everybody was checked in. Bobby Range was doing a phenomenal job of making sure all the takeout meals were going to the right people. And Kathy Martinez tirelessly was working in distributing the pies. I don't think she sat down for two and a half hours. Also got a chance to visit with two exchanged international students from Russia, and that was fun. And thank you to all the volunteers and staff that just made the day work for everybody so they could enjoy a meal. Mr. Bell also did a good job of presenting the chief of the fire department and the chief of the police department with a very nice banner, thanking them for their dedication and keeping Lahana safe. And I thought that was a nice touch in front of a nice, thankful audience. International Foods Night, just a great night for the city, just offers as a chance to be enriched by students from other countries and getting their point of view, and how they view us and how we view them, and maybe that will help bridge some of the shortcomings we have in the world as far as understanding where everybody's coming from. And for everybody else, happy Thanksgiving. If you're traveling, be safe, and I hope your family, that if you're traveling to see family or families traveling to see you, I wish they have safe travels. Get corny a little bit and say this is a weapon of mass distraction. Don't let it turn it in, don't let it turn you into a weapon of mass destruction and hurt somebody out there. So let's be safe. If a text isn't worth anybody's life, then there's a phone call. So have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Click it or tip it?
Yeah.
Any other governing body comments?
I do. I have the honor of being a judge for the 10th Annual Southeast Colorado Youth Entrepreneurship Fair, and I wanted to thank Southeast Colorado Youth Entrepreneurship Project, the Yap Julie Director is the, Julie Worley is the director of this, and I don't know if anyone else has heard about it, but there were schools from Bent, Boca, Crowley, Kiowa, Otero, and Powers County. And there were, the schools that participated were Wiley, Vilas, Lahana Intermediate, Tiger Trades, Pritchett, Manzanola, Campbell, and McClave. And they had an entrepreneur there who was a guest speaker, keynote speaker, who will be opening Colorado Drink Company here in Lahana in January. And I was just blown away at all of the kids that have their projects and how well-spoken they were and their business savvy. It was very impressive. If anyone's able to kind of drop in next year when they have it, it's really impressive. And I just wanted to say also with 2A passing, that we don't, we don't plan on looking at the past. We have over 50 years of financial experience up here, and we plan on just looking forward. I work with small businesses in my day job, and I'm also on the chamber who's gonna be working with businesses, the members, and getting new members, to educate them and reach out to the businesses. What do they need? What can we bring them here for? And also, or what can we do to help them to bring them here? Also, the manufacturing companies reaching out to the Colorado Economic Development out of the state. And then I also just wanted to say a quote real quick. And then I also just wanted to say a quote real quick. So one of my coworkers shared this with me a couple weeks ago, and she said, "The windshield is bigger than the rearview mirror, because where we are going is more important, more important than where we have been. The future is so much bigger than the past." And when I saw those kids there at the, at the fair, it just warmed your heart, because they are some really intelligent kids. They have great ideas, and that's why we did it, is for our future. Thank you.
Time.
Thank you.
I just had a few things to say. First and foremost, thank you, God. Thank you to the Ward 2 voters for trusting and believing in me by voting for me to represent you again. And to all of those who voted 2A for LJ. You did it. We did it. Two weeks ago, you all helped make history in Lahana by voting yes and saving our city. I am forever grateful. Thank you to my family and friends for all supporting me. A special thank you to my husband, Rick. You are so supportive and willing to help in any way, from coaching Little League to setting up Santa Claus and the Parade of Lights back in the day, to help with organized cleanups and just to do cleanup around town on your own. You help our community and shape the future by giving back, and I'm proud of you for that. Thank you for all you do. I couldn't do any of what I do without you. Thank you for being my rock.
Any other governing body comments?
I have to include a special thank you to my wife, Betty. Sorry about the oversight.
Good job, Paul.
She's the biggest supporter that I have, yeah. Thank you, Shando, for still the oversight on my part. A sincere thank you to my wife.
She's my rock.
I guess it'd be awkward if I didn't make my husband meals. That's what we're doing now, but thank you. Thank you to everybody. I have some very longtime friends and supporters that came to watch me this morning tonight, and I appreciate this community so much. I appreciate the support, and I am really looking forward to the future. I like your windshield analogy. Well done, Lisa. I like it. So, of course, thanking my husband was first, but my other comment was the Otero College, that's my day job. I am the director of international relations, so thank you, all of you who came to support our students. I spent about an hour and a half with one of our Russian students this morning, and it's pretty amazing. I found out about another international student. We have 36 countries here in Lahana, and I think it's a really unique, special part of our community. So thank you for your support on that. Otero College is involved in a master planning process, and our president, Dr. Zant, asked all of us as employees and staff to encourage our networks to attend the process on December 5th, I believe it's a Tuesday, at 5:30 in the Resuto banquet room. It's our community, we're gathering information from the community for the facility's master plan, and everyone is invited and encouraged. I hope we pack the room. This is a chance to come and talk about the future of Otero College from a master planning perspective, and just want to make sure that everybody knows about it. You don't have to RSVP, you just show up. Thank you.
That's 5:30 to 7:00?
5:30 to 7:30 is what the announcement said. Yeah, and it is on, it's on Facebook, it's on the website. If you need more information, I'm also happy to track me down for you.
And that's open to the general public?
Yes, everybody. Open and encouraged to come.
All right, did you? Want to thank you all? Might as well. So, start out thanking everybody for their vote, for my Ward 2 position. There was a need, and I felt it was time for me to step up. And while I'm the Ward 2 representative, I am also a representative of the city of Lahana, so I don't just represent Ward 2, I represent the whole city. One of the reasons to address Mr. Golden, one of the reasons I ran for this spot is because of 2A. Nobody wants a tax increase. I hope I do my job well enough that we never have to have a 2A for LJ committee again. Not anytime in anybody's in this room's lifetime. So I hope I can fulfill that job, and I'm going to try my best at it. And while we're thanking spouses, I thank my wife Elizabeth, who is actually working her second job tonight. And she asked me, "Well, when are you going to have time to do that?" And I was like, "Well, I guess I'll have to figure that out one day." But I want to thank you, and I look forward to, you know, doing the job that I was elected for. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Well, the good news is that I got all my thank yous out last meeting. A lot of people asked me why I did that, and I said, "Well, have you guys heard of Hillary Clinton?" You know, she thought she had it all sealed up, and that didn't go too well for her. So I was wanting to be prepared, so I'm going to thank everybody that was in that last one. Thank you again, especially my wife and my daughters and my family. Thank you, all you guys. But, you know, I want to add a special thanks to the 2A supporters. Whether you were on the committee or supported in your own way, thank you. The pain and stress that 2B was for myself, Rick was there with me in the trenches. I think Lisa went to a meeting. We had four meetings at the library, and they were all rough, no more than five people. And then that vote came back, and it went down by 600 votes, north of 600 votes. And we had a meeting. Dean, do you remember the meeting we had at the golf course?
At my age, I'm lucky to remember what I had.
I'll share it quickly. I'll share a quick story. So it was me, Dean, Rick, and Bill. And Dean's like, "We have to have a special election. We have to do sunset." He had all these different ideas, and I said, "I think we could run it back again the same way." I said, "I just think that they didn't know what they were voting on." And he kind of gave me a look like, "You didn't narrowly lose, Joe." It was, it was, it was a big loss. So we decided to try it one more time, but get out in front of it, and with the help of everyone on 2A, we got out in front of it, and the voters voted for it. And, you know, I'm so thankful for them for doing that, you know. And it is about the future. If you listen to what I'm going to say tonight, it's like we all coordinated it together, but, you know, it was well worth it. You know, thank you all the voters, not those, not just those who voted for me, but for all the voters. Thank you for participating and letting your voices be heard through the ballots and even through various meetings and on social media. Believe me, we know that our work is not done, and we understand that your vote should not be taken for granted. We will continue working to make Lahana the best it can be, not just through the city council and city employees, but from you, the community, with your input as well. So keep showing up. We're excited to have new council members with new ideas and are happy to have those same council members who are staying on with us as we continue to work. You know, 2A was one step, all right? It was a big step. Granted, it was a big step, but it was just one step in where we're going. So now that we have that step completed, we have to make sure that we're good stewards of this community's choice in going forward with 2A. And that means, you know, when we have citizens like Mr. Golden come up, that, you know, we know what we're doing, and we understand that that's a big ask that we asked for, and we got it. So the plan was never to go crazy once we got it. We wanted to keep what we have and slowly continue growing, a steady hand on this ship and start going the right direction with it. So I want to thank everybody once again, and as we appreciate this moment, we remain eager to see what the future has in store. So I'm very happy to work with this new council, and I look forward to, you know, getting a lot of stuff done this next two years. So thank you. And with that, I adjourn the meeting.
[inaudible] City Council with the Southeast Colorado.